Will you please rise? Please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Do you feel good, do you? Perp, perp, please?
Sure. Your heavenly father, we pray that you wash over the actions of our commission this evening, that we can successfully and positively move forward with the mission of our city and help support the needs of our citizens. We just thank and praise you for all the blessings you give us in your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, so for the minutes from the July first meeting? Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve and suspend working.
The motion by Wolf to approve?
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approve of the agenda? Any additions or corrections?
You can remove six C.
Remove six C. Gotcha. But I do want to talk to you, Jason, after we've talked about them succeed. Any other? Anything else?
Make a motion to accept the agenda with the noted duration.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, Jared, you're up.
We shall have copy of our report sent out. I hope maybe, maybe you don't want to. Let's do the street project first. I've told you before, we have remaining work, warranty work, and then punch list items. It's kind of where we're at. Substantial completion date of the project is August 1st, so that's next Thursday. The really only remaining work is the pavement markings. Our schedule will be here on Wednesday, so we'll be doing the striping. Should take one day to do that work. Delman Services, the subcontractor, doing that work, but still Ted and Mayo is the prime contractor. They should have that done in a day. After that, they've gotten the work done. Doesn't mean that they're totally done. The final completion date is December 1st, so they do have a few months to make sure the turf is established, to make sure there's no lingering issues with X, Y, and Z. So that work is scheduled to be done. There has been some punch list stuff that they have crossed off the list. For instance, the manhole that Woodworks noticed that had some asphalt in it. I know they were out to clean that out. I don't know if you guys have reviewed that yet and been told that, but according to the contractor, they came and cleaned that out. Actually, we have the government looking there, but I know they dug it up and slid it over and got it back.
Which one's that?
Was up on Divide. They're, they're working, they're taking care of things. I guess the one, next thing I'm going to bring up is just the chip sealing. Aztec Minnesota company that was a subcontractor did the chip sealing. They did a lot of the work last fall and the work on the new paved areas this year. The issue that they ran into, obviously you're aware of the erosion from the oil, is that they chip sealed that day. Chip sealing is a combination of the sticky tack oil they put down and they have to put the rock chips down within a minute or two. It, it cures fast. They did that, but then they had heavy rains that day. Explanation that I'm getting is that it was very humid that day. It didn't set up like it was supposed to, and that's why we had the erosion that we did. We had a meeting with contractor the next day here in the office and they brought, picked up loads of people in to try and clean up the mess. Obviously, there's cosmetic issues with the oil that's on the concrete and in people's yards. They're working and cleaning that stuff up. They know it's an issue. We're expecting to get a letter from them explaining that they're working on cleaning it up right now. You probably haven't got the email. They, they told us they are going to send that out, so. And we have damaged cars. They've asked is that people let City Hall know if there's been damage to vehicles so that they can address it. They've been working on some tedious, horrible process. I hope that they can do a good enough job on this stuff, but it's a work in progress. So if you have damage or need to make a claim, please let City Hall know. We can get you in touch with their persons through the detailing. Otherwise, we had little scares, some of that oil did get into the ditches and the surface water. So they hired a company, acronym for their company is SWAT. They came in to try and clean up all the mess. They cleaned it on the ditches the best they could. They could get some into Tamalope Creek and they've cleaned that up as best they could. Braun Intertech is a testing company. They did some soil testing and some water testing and those results have all been sent to their department of health or now called the Department of Environmental Quality. And we're waiting on response. We should have information back from them Wednesday of whether it met or exceeded certain environmental thresholds there, of which if there still are problems, the contractor will be responsible for cleaning that up. But the next day, we had the testing labs here and someone from health department came out and looked at things contractor agreed to hire somebody to clean it up. That's why they hired that oil field specialty company called SWAT to come in and do it. And we believe they've, as far as environmental contamination goes, I, I believe they'll, they'll have that taken care of. The cosmetic things are not done yet, but that's still important, but they'll maybe number two on our list as far as importance. So that's what's going on there. Any questions on that?
I know it's number two on the list, Jared, but it's super important. Yep. I do know that we have one citizen that lives south of Divide. I think a hundred yards or so. Marcia Swanson, I'm not sure if that just says, but that, I think, I think Aztec believe they cleaned her yard well enough and it's not. So just need to make sure we get into those rocks and that there.
We have not paid Aztec for the work.
Right.
So we're going to, we owe them hundreds of thousands of dollars for the chip sealing throughout town. And that's the ultimate leverage to get everything up the mess. I don't expect any issues. They have done, they have worked their tails off to try and get it cleaned up. They had a ton of researchers in town. It will never be perfect, but they are working on it and we do hold the money, so. I mean, if there's, if there are issues, we need to know about them. Marcia Swanson's the person we can get ahold of and take a closer look than.
It's not huge, Jared, I hear it's small. Jason?
Yes. I do know that, well, from, by both my vehicles, the guys that the detail off it, they've been, they worked all weekend long and like the plan we're going to pay in.
So it took multiple days.
Well, yeah, they're, they had about eleven vehicles on their punch list that week. And actually, after it got lined in, my wife's head it on, they cleaned it. They were a good job. So it's a very, very, very light coating, but he said if you crack down it, you found any dirt, it gets clean underneath that, so.
As far as the quality of the product, we haven't paid them yet and we're monitoring it. I mean, we have not seen big areas of chip seal peel off. That's something that we're concerned about. You know, if it's failed, we'll have to re-chip seal, but it hasn't happened yet. And, you know, we're supposed to pay them, you know, probably in August. We'll probably look at keeping this project open a few extra months. And we do have the one-year warranty after we pay them. So everything bonded. We have issues with that not adhering and not working. We have the insurance of the bonded company, so. I'm not as worried about it, but it's something we need to be paying attention to also. So if we do find areas that are peeling off or there's snowplows, you know, tear a bunch of chip seal off in certain areas, we need to know about them. And I mean, that's important, but you know, maybe not number one, but I know we're, we're paying close attention to that too. Any other questions on the chip sealing or any other construction from these guys?
None of these guys.
No invoices, just an update. I would expect that Mayo will be submitting an invoice in August to pay for chip sealing and some of the other work that they've done. We're still holding a lot of retainage from them. I believe over $600,000 in retainage plus the extra work. So we will probably make a payment to them in August. Obviously not for all of it, but we need to get subs paid for some of the materials and the work that they've done. And nothing else on that? I mean, let's put a manhole. I haven't seen the invoice on that yet, but it sounds like they're doing the work. I do recommend that we re-televise that line out that we have an access point. If you remember, we have an AC asbestos cement sewer main and those water mains when they're put in, they're not put sewer, you know, gravity flows. And so water mains are pressure pipes. So we think that it was repurposed from a water pipe to a sewer pipe. That's why there's no manholes on it. So it could do this. And if it does that, we probably have a infrastructure, you know, issue that we need to address. But I would recommend that we re-televise that. We have a camera, but it's not great. I can get somebody to look at it. I can get you a quote for somebody to look at it. Best when there's somebody in the area doing works, you know, the utilization for it. But it's just one block, so it's just not a big project.
So if you want, how far would you televise for the manhole? All the, all the way up?
Yep.
To the top of the hill?
I would. Just to figure out what's there. And you'll see sags, you'll see cracks, broken pipes. Last time we televised with our camera and it's fine. It's more like what a plumber has. It's not really made for big projects.
So Pace is, or some, or Kemper or somebody like that.
Yep, there's dozens of companies out there that do it. I'll have John get a quote for that, what you call it. Expedition Estates. You know, obviously we sent them a punch list of items. There's raising of gate valves, there's some settled areas, there's some sewer issues, exposed gasket. Yep, they dug a hole up there, which I presume was to fix one of the sewer problems. Eventually, we'll need to see the televising of that to prove that it was fixed. The hole is open and it's full of water right now, which is not good long-term. So it's, it's something that we need to get ahold of those guys.
Did you look at it today?
Yeah. So we dug it and left it open. That was kind of a liability on their part by doing that. Usually when you dig a hole like that, you want to throw it back up and replace it. I seen we're going to have long-term issues with it. It's just they're going to have to now dig it back out and put in dry dirt and re-comback it.
Now, the south side of the hole is three feet deep water.
Yeah. Yep, so it's all money up there. They have it fenced off so it's safe, but they can't just fill it in with dirt to be held with it. They're addressing the issues and we're being patient with them to fix the problems because they have to go back to fix them, but they're, they're not done yet. And I've got John watching that when they do show up.
Where's Anna?
Some of the new houses and my women's builders with the toast. It's on the north loop, on the north side of that loop. Let's see the excavators.
As far as the water system goes, so I guess we'll help Monty with a response to those guys or send him some photos and ask what their plan is to finish that. Water system? You guys had a 2012 water system study done by all tank engineers that looked to address some of the low water pressure issues in town and identified some problems and some solutions. Here now eight years later, there's a few funding opportunities to address some of those things. There's a whole different, there's six or eight or 10 different ways that you can solve these things. And we'd like to present a, like a short amendment to that study at your August meeting with some cost options, not only capital costs, but lifecycle costs. You've been contacted by the state saying that there's an opportunity to apply for some funding and those, that funding should be, in my opinion, should be in mid-August, which is 45 days ahead of their October State Water Commission meeting. I don't know if they'll take action on it then. It probably depends on how many applications they get. But I'd like to present at the August meeting some of the amendments and I guess we'll probably bring PowerPoint, go through the different, four or five different options to address the water supply problems and then what the costs are. And if you think that it's an important thing that we, I'll ask you to approve submitting applications to the Water Commission, it's not necessarily me you're going to get funding for it, but it, I think there's a fair chance that in the next two to four years that you'll get funding for your water supply projects. 2012 study, I'll take that. You, you've got it, you can rush up on it. We'll just do an amendment to it. It'll be a short amendment. If that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Other than that, just some little miscellaneous side things going on. You want to bring up anything else or just sit and wait?
Okay, now?
Any other some people's minds?
That's the only thing that I've been talking to Dave. I don't know if Dave talked to John. I have a resident over at now. Talking all the cul-de-sac roads over there. Renaissance so, there was almost like the, the piece of equipment that they laid the chip seal down. They didn't get home it, so there's bare tar. I don't know if Dave, if you looked at it all?
I have, no, I haven't. I think John did.
Where at, Jason?
Well, one street in particular is, is it Berlin Street? At the end, it'd be on the west side of Culmset. It's almost like they half-handedly come in and I don't know if the piece of equipment isn't able to lay chip seal all the way around. It almost looks like there should have been a shovel used.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
No, I've been using. Place, so did they come back and fix it?
Yeah.
Then the other place I know is, oh, North Deapples. Is that manhole on that street? Supposed to be that Selkton though, after all the construction.
Manholes.
Because if you drive over top of it, it's a pretty good speed though.
I'm not aware of that one, but manholes should be set below the pavement. In a perfect world, they'd all be three eighths of an inch. Our spec says three eighths of an inch, but there's tolerance.
Okay.
Might be a quarter inch, might be half inch. They may insert adjusting rings, but they're like an inch. That'd be like the smallest probably that we could get, so if it's.
That would put it more than like just by the naked eye to, you know, look at it. That would be pretty.
Is that?
North Deapples on Terry, like Terry Dickinson's.
South there.
Just south of this place.
But before you get to Divide?
On the north side of Divide. Yep, yep. I mean, it's, you know, a little reason why I noticed that it's going up to, probably since we're never doing that part of here.
We want those set low. I'm not aware of any smaller inserts. They, not attending him, but I haven't looked at it yet, so.
Yeah, I don't know where.
They need to be half inch low.
Yeah, I don't know where it has to be. It's definitely that or a little bit more. We definitely don't want it higher. But then does that cause any problems like in the winter months for freezing or not? Or I, I don't know.
Depending on how slow you have there, the roads will probably raise a little bit and the manholes won't. Because the ground raises and expands. So if your manholes are this far right now, it could, they'll, depending what the soil is, they'll move, so. But we do not want those manholes higher than this.
Oh, no. It's definitely not higher than this. I mean, I could be wrong, but in my mind, it's a little bit lower than tolerance, but I could be totally right. Like, oh, yeah.
Any else?
I might find a state for half hour, so if anything comes up.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, folks.
Six A, traffic control concerns Archie.
Yeah. I live in the corner of Fifth Street Northwest. Fifth Street Northwest is nine and a half feet narrower than Fort Fenton. And now that the road is through the dike down, what is it, Second Avenue, I think, or Third, I don't know. Anyway, we're getting a lot of traffic up in that part of town, okay? And another thing that's happening is we're having a transition in the neighborhood. It's from old people to young people. When I moved in there, I was the young people. Now I'm the old people. And there's a lot of kids, pets, you know? And, and that little narrow street, I don't know whether they're in the big ready to get where they're going or whatever, but they're way too much and too fast traffic. How much we can't do anything about, but speed we can do something about. So I've talked to, I actually talked to Ronnie about it one time when he was still for it. And I said, I wanted 15 miles an hour painted on each end of my block in big block letters on the street. And I know 15 sounds slow, but everyone's going to cheat, so we're going with human nature, right? So, you know, if they get close to 20, well, I, I can't argue that too much. But when they're driving 40 miles an hour on the street. And I, I personally patrol it because my shop is right in the middle of the block and I spend a lot of time in my shop. And when I hear them coming up, up the street going like crazy, I run out and yell at them, you know? And I fixed some of them, you know? Keith Kanata cannot fix.
Put that in the notes. Nobody can fix.
Between, between the propane truck and his vehicle. And I've talked to him several times. He's just, well, I'm not going to call.
Tim Schwartz is on the other street.
Yeah, well, yeah. And that's old one. But anyway, I've been waiting for three years because it's poor time. Anyway. So that's what I would like done.
You know Archie, I've been with you also. Corner of Fifth.
Right.
And that, you know, that is, especially the young people, that is a high-traffic area in the morning soon.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's just the thing. A lot of the kids from West Hazen come across that open space behind Wayne Jensen's house and they walk up the street and they're going to school. Cool, but not when there's, you know, not when there's people driving like idiots on the street.
And you don't have sidewalks.
No, there's no sidewalks.
Exactly.
Well, actually, there is a little bit and I own it. But it's, it's like 100 feet of, you know, in that block. But anyway, so I think it's really dangerous.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is just talk to Jim Wolf. Have you ever talked to the cops at all?
Not really.
Okay, I'd like to talk to Chief Wolf and talk to him about just, you know, raising more concern about that area and try to patrol a little more.
But I really think that putting the, the number on the street, even for, you know, I don't know, paint on the street. I don't know how long, wow, but, but it would be a, a good wake-up and maybe a training tool for people driving on my street.
That's something we'd definitely consider doing, you know, in the winter, obviously it gets covered up, but yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, of course in the winter. But in the wintertime, it was about a little slower. Well, not all of them, because I've had quite a few in my front yard over the years. So anyway, that's, that's my biggest concern right now, you know? Because like I say, there's a young couple just moved in across the street from me. Got five kids, you know, good kids, but yeah. And so it's actually fun to have the kids in the neighborhood again, because, you know, it was just real quiet for a long time. You know, like deathly quiet. So anyway, that was item number one.
Nancy is the portfolio holder for the police and fire. So we'll have Nancy to write.
Right, right. And like I say, I'm, I'm not afraid to yell at people. I yelled at Bill Zing one day and really got, got the evil eye. But anyway.
Yeah.
So, and then I have another item, but maybe that's going to come up.
It'll come up shortly.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, any comments? Six B, local permit for, how much do I quote this people?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, crossed off six C. Down to seven A. That was quick, Archie. Comments on proposed ordinances?
Okay.
All right, so Monty, have you received any other comments? The only on the parking ordinance, and we're going to, you know, next month, we are going to try to nail it down is the parking in, on grass in yards where people are not mowing and keeping their yards clean that way. I've got, and this is brought, this, what item was brought to my attention after the two weeks of the spring, the Florida paper came out talking about the ordinance, the junk vehicle ordinance and parking. And, you know, this person I went and drove around and they looked at about nine different places in town where people mark their cars on their grass in the yards where the grass gets quite high. So you don't have to move them or they don't mow under around them. And I would like this to address something in that fashion about that too.
I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Why is that wrong?
It's a nuisance, Archie, when people do that and then they, they don't, and they're in the grass and weeds are falling, they don't.
Why is it a nuisance?
It's a nuisance because our neighbors complain about it. They have ordinance that's about tall grass and weeds and.
Basically, it's addressing junk vehicles, isn't it?
That's what, that's what the ordinance is about, yeah.
Not ones that you drive.
I know, but I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, this is all aesthetics. And does aesthetic outweigh property rights?
Well.
I'm going to ask you.
Certain, you inserted certain distress.
Does the aesthetic, does the aesthetic outweigh the property rights? Yes or no?
Some, yes, yeah.
Okay. You?
I would say no, but there is, we have one gentleman who comes in here once a month and he can't sell his house because his neighbor's yard looks like crap. So is that his privilege or is that the neighbor's privilege? Does it reduce his value? I don't know, but is there a correlation to the two?
Better have proof of it.
But if you look at it, you know.
Accusations don't stand.
Right, right. What if?
And Archie, I, I, I agree, but I, but I think the, the aesthetics are important to do to its influence on, on property value. And that's why a lot of communities have covenances to where, where they stipulate what color you can paint your house.
Lots, lots of communities have covenances.
Exactly. And it's not for that very reason, to try to maintain aesthetics and to also retain a particular level of property value.
But this is a small town, North Dakota.
Understand.
This is not a gated community. This, and, and this is a well-to-do place that is mostly extremely well manicured, you know? But I don't believe it's anywhere near anybody's business whether their grass isn't mowed or uptight against their vehicle. If it doesn't affect what you guys do and as far as I see your organization or your board, city, your commissioner or whatever is services, safety and health, aesthetics do not come in to the equation. I don't believe it's anybody's business, whether the grass is growing up around somebody's car or Kemper or what. And, and if you ask those people if they need help running their lives, what do you think they're going to tell you? See, you're, you're intruding pretty deeply into somebody's personal belief, system, activity, whatever, you know?
I would say, Archie, and in addition to the aesthetics though, when, when you start getting the, the higher grass areas and stuff, they're also becoming the haven for, for the mosquitoes and, and, and different things like that, which can cause health issues in your community as well.
That's, that is stretching though. You know, you're, and I knew I was going to run into that here, that yeah, yeah, they could be unhealthy. They could be unsafe. But honestly, unless you have proof of that, you can't just suspect that it happens. So if you're going to catch mosquitoes and come to them, I've had, I'll listen to you.
Well, we don't have.
But if you're going to say, hey.
Archie, we don't have to do that. Archie, we don't have to do that.
Well, yeah, but you should. You see, we're talking about the difference between what could be and, and what's right. You understand? That's what we're talking about, right and wrong here, really simple. So, uh, now, we're already deeper into this than I ever planned, but why is this an issue now? Why now?
What's that?
This, this set of, this set, this set of, uh, of, uh, ordinances. Now, I really got a kick out of the outhouse one, I really liked that, that was good. I mean, I'm old enough to remember outhouses in town, but I don't remember last time, so.
Well, we've always had an ordinance about it.
Well, okay, well, so why are we doing it again?
Well, we're, we're just trying to make it so it's eas- more easy.
Does it supersede what's on the books? Or is it just an addition?
The only guy was update things.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Just because it's been that way forever, does that mean it's right?
But is it?
Probably not.
Are you gonna add this and remove the old ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, well, and, and that, you know, like I say, I, I think that's not an issue. I mean, do you know of anybody that's got an outhouse in their, in their, in their yard? The last one I remember was behind the congregation church, it was on the corner of Third and Main, Third Avenue and Main Street. That's the last outhouse I remember seeing in this town. It seems like you're wasting your time and energy on outhouses.
Well, that's not, that's not where we're putting our time.
No, I, well, there is some.
That's not, that's not the, the meat of the issue.
Okay, and you're right, and you're right. And I'm getting way off track, but.
But if you take it out, there is someone who's going to push it and put one in, just because you took it out. Because now you brought it up, they're gonna say, "Hey, there's an ordinance and now we took it out."
When the problem does exist, then write the ordinance.
Well, but we're mostly focusing on the junk vehicles, though.
Yeah, right.
We're not focusing on all of them.
And what we've done is we, we've gathered up information from, from other communities, and that was part of the, the boilerplate.
But this is Hazel, I'm not worried about what Buell and Center and Stanford do. But anyway, uh, yeah, the, and of course, it's no secret that I'm here because of the junk vehicle stuff, right? I mean, that's really why I'm here. I, I got off track on the outhouse stuff. But, uh, anyway, and that's what I think, I think you're overstepping your mandate by doing things like this. Because if people want something on their property and you can't prove that it's a health or a safety issue, you cannot legislate against it because it's not a problem until it's proven. You know, if, if we wanna play what ifs, I could fill books with rules for you. You know, I mean, I'm an imaginative man, I could fill them up. But I think you're overstepping your mandate from the people. Because aesthetics are a very, very personal thing, you know? And, you know, in fact, you know, I said that, uh, I had a new young couple move in next to me, you know what happened was? Their neighbor, she really had a problem with what they were doing in their yard. They were moving some bushes and fixing the fence and stuff. And, and she got on their case and stole their joy of their new home because it's the first time they've owned a house and they've got five kids. And I'm angry about it. It was no, nobody's business and they weren't doing anything, but they have a camper and they have a boat and they have a snowmobile, none of which is on the street, you know? Uh, it, it makes me angry when people don't mind their own business. And I know Mike Quinn is pushing this, and just in case you were wondering about that, Mike Quinn is using you, you to come after me. Because I had a big disagreement. Mike Quinn and I were actually pretty good debate buddies. And then we had a big falling out and it, it got kinda ugly. And now what I see is Mike Quinn pushing all of this to get after me through you.
He's never said anything to us about Archie Rose now.
No. Well, he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to nickname you by name.
You're not, you're not the only person to tell, have you driven around town and seen?
And Archie, it's not even, I, I'm not even concerned about you.
Yeah, well, I under, you know what?
You're not, you're not one of the.
Well, the thing is, that now, you're not concerned. You know what I'm saying, is it leaves the door open. Because things are gonna change. I have the chassis for a nineteen thirty-eight Chevy sitting outside my back garage. Been there for, well, since about November, you know, might be there till next spring. And it's in my property, it's off the boulevard, and it's really nobody's business but mine. It's my property on my property. Now, people don't think it's beautiful, but I do. And what makes my opinion any less important than yours? I'm Free White in Twenty-One in Hazel, North Dakota, just like you guys, you know? And, uh, this judgmentalism really, really sticks in my craw.
This, Archie, this rules and ordinances didn't just happen in the last three months.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
There've been rules and ordinances.
Well, why aren't they being enforced then, why do we need new ones? Because it takes.
We, we wanna make it more easier to force, easier to understand, easier, you know, and that's, that's what we're talking about and that's why we're getting out there.
Let me go at this from a different angle, okay? So, I'm not a white people. I have a camper, but it's actually a toy hauler that my little hot rod fits in the back of when we take it to the car then. So, it's really a, really related to my hobby, it's not camping per se, okay? Now, everybody in town here, right, six months for the year, they can park their boats and campers on the street, right? Yes? Okay. Okay, now, you talk about nuisances. They restrict traffic, they block street signs, they do those things. Now, I'm not trying to take that away from them.
True.
But, but they are keeping their stuff on public property and you can't argue that, that they can be a nuisance. Especially if they park on both sides of the street, they got a big camper there eight and a half feet wide. That's, uh, seventeen feet of street missing, you know? So, and that's if the wheels are right up against the curb. So, if I wanna put one of my hobby vehicles on the street or even keep it on my yard, now it's gonna cost me fifty bucks for the first six months. It's, and it's a fine, it's not a, it's not a permit, it's a fine, it's simple terms. That I'm being fined for having my hobby equipment on my property. And not only that, after the second six months, when it's costing me a hundred dollars, you're gonna come after me with the law. Because it's different. He's different, stomp him. And that makes me angry. So, where are we at? I want you to thoroughly understand this. Do you need help running your life? Jerry?
No, wife, she's, she, she does a well enough job.
Does she need help running your life for you?
No, she doesn't.
Okay, how about the rest of you? You need people telling you how to run your lives? I sure don't, I know exactly what I'm up to. And I spent most of my life gearing my situation to service my hobby in my retirement. And it occasionally involves some junk cars sitting around because I am creating some, like, a lot of times it's three cars built into one, you know? And that doesn't happen overnight, that doesn't happen in, in a year. The average time it takes me to build a car is five years. Five years of steady effort and expense. And I don't want you discriminating against me because I'm not a white people.
No one says that, Archie.
Well, yeah, but see, it's a form of favoritism, don't you understand that? That, that the people with the boats and the campers and stuff, they can't park it on their yard because they have more stuff than what they can safely store. So, it's put on the street where it's a nuisance and a safety hazard, in my estimation. And, and there's no doubt that it is, because stuff sitting on the street, especially great big stuff like boats and campers. In fact, just a couple of blocks straight north of here, there's a guy that got a great big camper, sits on the street. He's on the corner and his boat sits on the other side of the corner, you know? Surrounds his house. And, and it obstructs the view of the intersection, it's one of the uncontrolled intersections, it's a big problem. But I don't care because he's got something that he needs. Just don't take it away from me. And the people who are sitting around with the problems in there, in, uh, with, with problems like, like you're talking about, while it's here, it's there, it's everywhere, well, why don't you go ask them? Do you need some help? If, if you would like some help cleaning up this, and that'd be a great civic thing, in fact, Mike Quinn would be the one to, to, uh, chair that committee about helping these people.
We actually have, Archie, and some people have accepted that help.
Right, right.
And some people will just, you know.
Right.
Said no.
Right, and leave them alone. It's their property.
So, ask them, but if they say no, then it doesn't matter.
Right, that's right, yeah, because it's their property. You know, I might not like this flowering bush you have in your yard, but I'm sure as hell I'm not gonna tell you I don't, that you should get rid of it. You know, quit the judgmentalism, just it for the sake of aesthetics, that's what I'm saying. So, anyway. Uh, and, and since the, the rule is gonna say I have to have things licensed if I have it sitting on my yard and to be left alone, it has to be licensed. What about all the unlicensed boats and campers sitting in people's yards? Are they against, is that also an issue?
Those will also be on the list.
Okay, okay, well, I'll be out checking if this follows through, okay? And, uh, what, what I'm saying is help people, don't punish them, you know? A lot, like you say, a lot of people are looking for help, they're just not capable, for whatever reason. Whether they just don't wanna do it, but would like to have it cleaned up. Heck, I used to volunteer and go to the Indian reservations and clean up yards at the Indian reservations. You know, through a church program, you know? And, uh, so it can be done. So, but, but when you, when you grant the people who have boats and campers parked on the street and restrict what I can have off the street, and I've set out my situation so that I can have everything off the street. It may grow some grass around it because it's just hard to keep everything up. But that is a form of favoritism for those people. And it's discrimination against what I do. And it is stri- strictly attitude and perspective. So, uh, should I share you some of my jokes that I wrote in here?
No, thank you. We appreciate it.
Because, well, what I think you're doing, and I'm gonna share one anyway because it's too damn good to let go. I am beginning to think that we have a new class of citizen in Hazel and I'm considering them to be called the Hazel Deplorables. You can quote me in that if you'd like in the paper. So, anyway, so I've said my part. And I understand the, the want to clean up. And I do, I understand your, your motives and stuff, I really do. Because I can look, go by Wade Solwin's place close to my house and go, "Wow, that's a mess." But you know what, it's his mess, it's not my mess. And I'm fairly messy, probably not as bad as Wade, but, uh, you know, I'm fairly messy because stuff comes and goes and I got quite a bit of property and I got, I've got five trailers, you know, all for different purposes. And, uh, and I can't help that I am highly active in my lifestyle. So.
Archie, I really appreciate you coming in and mentioning that. I, I, I get it, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
We have a huge, not just Mike Quinn, we have a huge portion of our community.
People who mind their own business, exactly.
That feels, that like, like.
Right.
This and like what you feel.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right.
And a lot of people don't have the courage to come in and say it, and I'm glad you did, because you're representing.
Well, I'm not, I'm here, I'm here for myself.
I know you are, I know you are, but people will read the papers, say, "I feel the same way Archie does."
Yeah.
They, they will, I, I, I agree.
Because, believe me, I know about every Garrettwood vehicle in this town.
I'm sure you do.
And there aren't that many, okay? There aren't enough to go through all of this coming forward. And if you continue to reach out to those people and say, "If you need help, ask." And you can find some public service organization, I don't know, you know, one of the animal groups, the moose, the eagles, the lions, whatever they are. Something like that, and, and form a group that will go help people who want it. But most people have to be asked and approached. Don't just stand at the curb and take a picture and say, "Isn't this horrible?"
Archie, I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm done. Sorry, I was on the roll.
Don't apologize, don't apologize, that's my, thank you.
Okay.
Scott?
Uh, my concerns are, you know, you're talking like utility trailers and stuff like, a lot of utility, utility trailers don't even have to be licensed to stay out of the.
A lot of them don't, sorry.
Would you say that these have to be licensed to stay out of the?
Yeah, which one is new and which one is not?
If they don't, if they don't have to be licensed, then.
Okay.
We're not gonna force you to license something that doesn't have to be.
Under fifteen hundred pounds, right? I, I, I think that, I think that was the, that was the rule that I remember.
And I don't, I don't know exactly the specific language we have about trailers.
If they're under fifteen hundred pounds, okay, it's starting with Garrettwood vehicles, where's it at? Uh, that's.
Because I'm sure there's people in this town, right, about the side of my house that should have been painted or recited.
Yeah, yeah.
Just not here.
Yeah, I, I have complaints about, I mean, I have opinions. But I'm not entitled to speak them, because everyone can have an opinion, but you're not always entitled to say it out loud.
Believe me, Archie, I'm a direct descendant of a huge opinionated person.
I know your dad very well, your dad and I were friends.
Well, he'd be sitting right beside you tonight.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, but it just happens that I have a lot of stuff because I'm active, I, I'm doing things and I like stuff, you know?
And again, Archie.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not, I'm not.
Well, you guys talk about this amongst yourselves and I'll be back for the next one.
All right.
All right, thank you, thank you for the time.
You're welcome. Any other comments on ordinances? Pat, any comments?
We just, we both people disagree on things.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, we're gonna move on to reports, nine A, water sewer, garbage.
As, as Jared mentioned tonight, they are going to be, uh, giving a presentation at an upcoming meeting with regard to, uh, some potential plans for future, for water pressure issues in the city and everything like that. And I've been spending a little bit of time with Jared, just understanding what, what they're working on. And, uh, we'll see where that takes us. And, and I still have yet to, to meet with the actual city employees in those categories here to learn a little bit more about what, what they do for a living and how it affects our cities. So, that's my, my job for myself is to just get caught up on that.
Thank you, Dan. Streets?
Outside of what we talked about earlier, um, if we follow out where it's going on, um, there is a good handle on it. Pretty easy handle, uh, with the. I don't know if it's an insurance company that Aztec is hired, who it is to do the, do the, uh, cleaning of tar off vehicles, but I did see one, a lot of them up there, it was bad. So, all I can say is to residents, you know, use that. If you feel you don't have it, have them, just drive up and check it out. The, the guy that's running the operation, Kyle Wong is his name, um. Um, he's more than happy to, if you swing in, if he, if he finds anything, it's covered. So, um, I didn't think I had a light, dark green metallic pickup. But I did, worse than I thought. So, um, anyways.
I think, I think that's the important message, you know, there, there, I've heard some people complain about things and I asked them, I said, have you called Monte or have you called C Hall? And no, 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 well. There, there is an avenue for, and, and from what I've heard, for the people that are getting this service, they're, they're more than happy to, to help out with it. And for those individuals that are very particular, they're, they're working with them as well. If, if it's not good enough the first time, they, they make their, their concern known. And, and they are working with it, so, so kudos to them, it was an unfortunate event. Um, but what I've seen, even the, even the night when we were driving around the city, looking at this, we saw the whole caravan of folks coming in, they were reacting very, very quickly. Could have been prevented, you know, who knows, but, uh, the result is that I've seen some, some high, high levels of activity taking place, so that's a good thing.
Neil? Dave, for streets, do you get a chance to talk to John or Jared about the front Tyson Ginstanders?
Yeah, John, I went and looked at that today.
Okay, what was his thoughts?
And the trees are.
Okay. The trees are, are on the boulevard, okay.
Using old damage, everybody told Forester comes up and I get his comments or whatever.
Yeah, so what's happening is Tyson, Tyson Ginstander has some huge cottonwood trees, he lives in West Hazen. And the, the roots are coming up and through the new asphalt. You can see a root, actually about this much of a root coming through, and then there's other spots along the curb and gutter where the asphalt's starting to heave up, it looks like just kind of going through this type of thing. And the new, new curb and gutter is cracking already in that area, it's probably due to that, those also, so. Uh, Dave and I also drove over and looked at, um, what do you mean?
Brian, Brian Undersayers cottonwood trees too, he has some huge ones along the boulevard area.
But that street was totally reconstructed this year, so they went down about two feet almost in that. So they may have cut a bunch of roots out of there in that process, but we'll keep an eye on that too. Cottonwoods have shallow roots, you know, in Ginstander's yard, you can see a lot of roots, uh, surface level, you know, where they're through.
Are you my firewall of trees in my front yard, city property?
No, sorry. So, depending on what the forester says, and we, we may have to remove about six big cottonwoods there.
Fair enough.
Um, and, you know, if, if the resident wants new trees there, there's plenty of room to, you know, put new boulevard trees in between those, so.
Yeah, I'd say if there are, it's a hard problem.
Be a big mess. So. Um. Casey's not here for finance and busing, anything, uh, might have came. All right, police, fire, Forest Street.
Uh, I haven't gotten ahold of Jim yet or Casey, but I talked to my, uh, Freylik in, uh, Forest Street, and he said that they were looking at some trees at Moses Park. And he was trimming them up, and I'm not sure if he cut them down or not, he was gonna try and get ahold of somebody to see if. They thought he should because they were getting pretty.
Your work number two.
Yeah, yeah, so he is going to run, clear out those trees. That would be it.
HCD?
Well, you know, I really don't have anything to add. I've had my surgery, so I'm slowly coming back. It'll be a little bit before I'm one hundred percent.
Have you heard when Tim's gonna pour the concrete over here for these garages, that's?
I know they met last Thursday, might be great meeting, no? I was at HCD at the same time, so it makes the meeting even.
All right, and under my report, um, today I met with Monte and Jim Wolfe, and we're talking about the intersection here on Fourth and Main on the curb down here. It's, it's one of those things where it's not, the problem's not going away, we, we fortunately not had any accidents there that have been, you know, catastrophic due to a anhydrous truck or a semi or tanks or, or somebody not known who has the right of way. You know, believe it or not, most people don't drive fifteen around that curb like, like is posted. Um, and I'm probably guilty of that too. But I think in lieu of putting a stop sign down to that corner, you know, to try, draw some attention to the speed there, you just need to do something. Um, I would like to put some new signage there. Um, with, kind of like we have at the school. If there's solar power or not to, but something flashing on it to alert people, just sort of, uh, a lot of people don't even know it's fifteen. You know, I don't think people in our community even look at speed limit signs in town.
Especially since it isn't marked from the north. That fifteen mile an hour sign from the north is just a warning sign for the curb, it's not an actual speed limit.
Right. So, I'm, I do not wanna put a stop sign on that curb. It'll be a run stop sign to nerf the code, I probably forget that. Um, Jim, we didn't talk to Jim, he said it just, it needs to be more enforced also, no matter what the speed limit is, the enforcement is a huge issue. Um, Monte and I looked at a few different signs today. And he's got up here on the board, um. They don't give away to that chief, that's for sure.
No, these that actually show the speed are around three thousand dollars.
Then the ones with the, the static sign with just lights on it, it's under a thousand for those. Um, so. But I don't know what your thoughts are. I told you today, we're not gonna make a decision tonight on doing anything specific yet, but I, I'm ready to do something, I'm just, I'm, I'm really nervous about an accident happening in that corner that, and here we are with twiddling our thumbs for everyone saying we should have, we should have.
Can we put something more like that intersection, because I don't think people get too hoots about that north to south boundary. You know, but is there, could we get a sign like that that says, whoa, look out, you know, watch for, because it's an intersection, like maybe do like a teenager or something and because I don't think, you know, I, I watch because I know, but.
Right, me too.
And I personally think it doesn't matter what speed limit sign we put up there, it can be a big bright orange thing that says slow your roll.
But I think.
I think the only thing that's gonna stop, do it as a stop sign. Or how many times they run it, because even if you're going fifteen and that, and that anhydrous truck thinks he's got the right of way, he still wins.
What about the ones coming from the south, they have a stop sign, they actually like birds house?
There is.
There is.
Not by birds, obviously can't.
No, no, I mean, coming this way.
Right, but I mean, people coming from the north are blowing straight through that intersection too.
I know up in Fargo, on Twelfth Avenue North, as you're heading towards, towards NDSU campus, they have the, the display there. But they also have a reputation that they, they tick it when you're going over that bridge and going into the campus area. And I know a lot of people pay very, very close attention when that thing starts blinking when you're going faster than twenty-five. I see people slowing down very, very quickly. But I believe the thing that led to that, people paying attention to it, wasn't just because it was given the information, but because they had heavy enforcement there. And it developed a reputation of being a place where people get tickets. And if, if Jim and his group, um, picked that particular area and enforced that heavily, that's gonna be the word on the street. But I think you, you probably still need, uh, some sort of visual indicator there. Three thousand dollars is a lot of money.
So then you got the policeman sitting down here and we also want him sitting over at Rosenell's because they're going too fast and then really, actually, they should be at the school when school is on, because that's a little bit more important than the stop sign here. And we have one cop on duty. Where is he gonna go?
You gotta move, they move.
We can't, yeah. Because the enforcement is great, I just visited my daughter too and she said, thirty, or my sister, thirty-five, twenty-five, thirty-five, or thirty-five, twenty-five, forty-five, do not speed because he is always sitting there. Every time I've driven by there, he's sitting there. Every time I drive by there, we're not gonna have cops sitting there.
No, no.
So.
And you, you can't have.
We can't.
Yes.
You can't have one cop everywhere. I, I believe a, a stop sign and make sure that that north and south has the right of way. You can try a fifteen.
Shouldn't we put up a stop sign for a thirty day trial? Takes ten minutes to put up a stop sign, ten minutes to take a solid.
Stick them there for a couple hours every day and ticket those people who go through that stop sign and where it'll get around, that you will be stopping. Of course, people still go through this one on Main, so.
If you're seeking public opinion, I do know that the flashing sign of the speed tells you how fast you're going. You do have a tendency to slow down.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I just went through Dodge yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
And anytime you see that, you.
I do.
Yeah, same thing at Center. The one they have, you go into Center, you automatically let up on the throttle.
Unless there's a consequence.
If you gotta.
Oh, even without the consequence, even without.
They go.
I haven't seen a cop at Center for years, but I always lighten up on the foot.
I've been to Bowman ten times in the last year and every time I go through Amadon, even though the guy's sitting in a car every time. I slow down. And just, just might be there one time. So, I, I don't know.
I agree, we need to try something, because we've been talking about it for months. If we wanna try a flashing speed sign, try it.
Oh, what about like the stop sign that flashes like over by?
Is that at the school?
Yeah, that way at least they're, are physically reminded that it's there.
These are three thousand dollars?
Yeah, Jim Wolfe said he's gonna talk to, um, the chief and be able to Frankston. They have a portable, they don't, he's accurate?
The player that took their, their truck took their portable sign and it was.
Well, when are they gonna ask for an insurance claim, do a new one? Maybe we can ask the state, the DOT or something, or what have, but. You know, at least, it, it's, it's only a temporary thing, just to remind people that's, that's the speed limit, it's gonna, can't be there all the time.
I, I think if we're gonna take, take the next step, something that's temporary, as soon as you put the stop sign, then you're done. It's not like, oh, well, I guess you can take a stop sign back, though, we've moved stop signs and stuff like that, but, uh, I think in general, that, that visual indicator uh, probably has more people slowing down than, than not.
Yeah, even though this is more money. I think people are gonna be aware of numbers flickering at them.
I like the idea of maybe approaching DOT and see if there's something that we might be able to get temporarily just to.
Tell them you want thirty day free trial.
Try that out.
Or you can rent one, maybe there's one.
I know, we have one out at DDC. And, and I watch, some people don't pay any attention because I, I see the vehicles in front of me and what it reads when they go through there. Um, but, you know, I don't wanna be that guy that somebody says, well, geez, filler goes through it all the time, so I slow down. And I think that you, you've got a lot of people that will look at that. Maybe there isn't an awareness that that's the speed on that curb, fifteen.
I didn't know it was fifteen. I don't know flying or other, but I know I'm going faster than fifteen.
Speed limit is actually.
Our library, yeah.
But there isn't one yet.
No, and that's probably, you might have commented more, I know there's one here, but coming this way, there's not.
Maybe we need to put a second one. Hardway down.
Well, we talked about maybe one in each direction, not. I don't know, but it's still gonna be a matter of enforcement.
I don't think I've ever seen that. The fifteen.
Right there.
A lot of people have them too.
I just assume it was twenty-five.
Yeah.
I, I, I deal with it daily at the plant, we have signs that say you have to have hearing protection or no sunflower seeds and you see a pile, you know? So, when, when people see something that's just a static sign, you, it loses it. If, if you had something blinking, whether it's a stop sign or whether it's the speed indication, something that's blinking, something that catches a person's attention.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention this at the next meeting too, and I wanna make a decision on doing something at the next meeting, but. I've got, I can spend a thousand dollars without asking you guys, so I may do it myself, you know? Do something because I'm, I.
I can check with DOT, I have a difference in the steel that I have.
Everybody's given Howard bought a roadway stop by Hazen Motors and stuff, and after it was in, everybody liked it.
Everybody's ninety-nine percent on stop.
Yes.
It's only a, you pay for the first month of people getting used to it, I mean, that's, how long is a stop? You come to the stop, but for anybody coming to go, it's not like it's stop and stay put.
Yeah.
So, do you, you do a stop here at the corner, where would you do it coming from the north?
A stop sign up north.
No, just, just one. Just, just one stop.
Maybe you're coming to a T. Coming off Main Street, you're turning on two way through the street. But Main Street ends, right there. You're turning off of Main Street on Two Fourth.
That's why I'm talking to the teens, but even the flashing stop sign, I like that. And they'll see it, oh shit, that's a stop, not just slow down, but actually stop.
Well, I, I think it's a safety issue, that's why. I think it's something that needs to be done. Jared?
It is a safety issue, it's a terrible safety issue. You guys know it, and I know, I, I didn't grow up here, so I don't have the, you know, relationship, and I, so for me, when I pull up to it, I don't know what to do because.
Where they're supposed to do, yeah.
Right, yep, so if you guys grew up here, you know it, you're comfortable with it, you think that everybody does, but not everybody does. It is a safety issue, we have to address it because when somebody does get killed there, none of us are gonna live with it. So it has to get addressed. And I like the idea of trying a stop sign for a month. But we make a decision at the next meeting is a good idea.
And there are a lot of people who do stop because they don't know what's going on, they're like, I gotta stop, and then they'll continue.
I would have it when I go to turn, I use my turn signal. I do, I'm making a corner.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
I turn my turn signal off and I go around, it's self-cancelled, I turn my steering wheel off, that it back there, self-cancelled. So I am making a corner off of Main Street.
If we do a stop through, I'd want it to be flashing, just like solar, solar power.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not against it. So I don't, you know, if we want the full board present for, for that discussion, I don't.
Nancy won't be here at the next meeting.
I'm not against it either, what I'd, I'd like to see is try the stop sign.
Yeah.
And then I'd like to see a digital one coming from the north.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by hat.
Second.
Second by.
So you mean just a digital one can tell you how fast you're going, you're on the curb?
Yeah, like.
Okay.
Coming from, coming from the car.
From the car, so put a digital one up.
Question, is that, this is for a temporary or? Uh-uh. Just being done on a trial basis or?
I don't know if we can buy a temporary sign for a thousand dollars instead of that.
Find out if we can get a longer from the DOT for, for that portion of it maybe.
Yeah, I'd like to have.
If you'd be willing to refine your motion.
Yeah, can we do that, Monte? And then we'll get back.
Do you wanna do the temporary stop sign at this time and then?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Permanent blinking stop sign coming from Main Street.
From Main.
And seeing about a, a temporary visual indicator.
See if that helps before we make that.
Would that be the larger expense, if you were to buy one of those per month?
So, yeah, temporary for the, for the digital sign coming from the north and permanent stop sign blinking like up at the school.
Will you second that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Or advisement? Any more discussion? Dave?
If we would put that stop sign up or if you pass that, then I would mark and probably put up a temporary sign or just regular stop sign. Because when we put up a stop sign, a stop bar would have to be painted in the streets and being, and it'd be in Tom painting Wednesday, you would want that stop sign at that bar painted right away.
Mm-hmm. We can always paint it black and cover it if we didn't wanna continue.
Right, if it's a dog, you could black it back out, but being, if it's gonna be in Tom painting,
Yep.
you might as well get the sign up.
Put a temporary non-winking one up?
Until it, until the blinking one hits your.
You can always put one of them amber, flashing.
I can put one of them amber flashing lights.
At the police, so that you know it's there.
That really is, I think I could put that right on the pole with it, if that someone rolls out at the shop.
Do you have, do you have a stop sign up there?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion to purchase the blinking stop sign for Main Street, and then to check on the temporary rate on signs.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? You do realize we'll have to defend that stop sign many, many times, and it'll be the dumbest stop sign in town.
We can blame it on the engineering.
It's a safety issue, and it's...
I, I think it's, yeah, I think everyone will understand.
I'm not pushing either way, but I just look at it as a safety point, and it needs to be addressed.
I do too, especially with the traffic that goes straight south. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Rule call.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolfe.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried. Ten A, Main Street, Merth, uh, ND Hospital. We, this is a conference that Buster and I and Anthony went to last year. Who else went with us? And there's, I thought there was a fourth. What's that?
Was Kaylee there?
Not with us.
It just says Buster, myself, and Jerry.
I thought we had a fourth, but anyhow, this, this is a sponsorship opportunity that we have. The, the sponsorship will also cover our attendance, correct Buster?
Yeah, I gather, I don't remember the details on the sponsorship.
But, uh...
Sliding scale.
Yeah, I... So...
The conference is in October.
End of October, yeah. And this is a really beneficial conference, I've mentioned it before, it's a lot of information. Very well attended across the state. It'll be in Bismarck. So there's three options, I can't read it, Monty.
Well, there's...
I have it on my computer.
Two people, four people, and six people, is that what you're saying?
Depending on the level.
Yeah, depending on the level of sponsorship that covers, you know, if you're doing the three hundred dollar table, it'll cover the four attendees.
And I'd like to see us do that.
What did it cost for attendees last year?
Probably a hundred bucks. I think it's the value of it for what we do is pretty, pretty good.
You would scrounge up a fourth, bring it for you.
Yeah, sure, yeah. I would love to see one of, another commissioner go to it. It's a three day conference, and if you can even attend the end of the days, or a few of the sessions up.
You got the specific dates?
It's over, it's, oh, thirty first.
Twenty ninth, thirtieth, or thirty first.
Yes. You'll be over trick or treaters.
I should be, who knows?
So anyhow, that's...
And if you have no emphasis data, I would definitely volunteer to go, but if there are...
We, and we don't need to know.
And last minute, you're doing the motion for this.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll make that motion to, to the sponsorship for four people.
The three hundred dollars?
Yes.
Motion by Wolfe. Second by Pillar, discussion. Rule call. Wolfe.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
We saw the question there, I'm sorry, I know we already voted. It said, would the city like to assist in this? But we're, we're picking up the tab, so we just voted on, okay?
Eleven A, um, tar kettle purchase. If you had an opportunity to get up to the shop to see the, that tar kettle, um, that David has out there, it's a pretty nice unit. Uh, the, the hour meter, it talks, it shows on the V-Sline, it shows zero hours. Maybe we put on twenty minutes now.
Yeah, it's got like four tenths of an hour on the V-Sline.
So it works.
It works, they've done it. They can fill all the oil, all the diesel fuel, all the filters, test it, run everything, and if the burner lights, heat's...
So it's, it, it was, the inside of the, the tank is clean, there's no, nothing in it.
Yeah, there was very, from what Dave told me, there was very minor issues from...
Tires are in great shape.
Yeah, it's got tires on.
I think it's a really investment, uh, something that will keep for twenty-five years. But the warranty would only be, what, at least a thirty day?
He said, yeah, they stamp mine for thirty days, so guaranteed thirty days, everything works.
If, if we do pull a trigger, I would want Dave and his guys to fill it, use it now, to make sure all the seals are good, it works and operates what we want, not wait till spring. And then they say, oh, sorry, your thirty days is up, uh, six months ago.
Timing is good for, for doing that kind of crack sealing and stuff from now?
Not really. I'd have to see if anybody's got a tar kettle that's open and running. If it'll work, I can get tar to put in, but I could visit with the salesman to see if he would...
Well, we have areas in town, we have areas in town to use.
I understand what you're saying, that you want, you wanna prove it out.
Yes, absolutely.
Whether we can hit a tar, I mean, there's spots we can definitely check some, you know, run it.
But we have spots in town that you could use it on now.
Yeah. You can chill in with it. And, and it will take it, will, it'll, it'll perform, make sure, not as a piece of equipment, but in terms of putting it out there this time of the year, it's okay?
It's not optimal. The cracks aren't the widest open because there's a frost coming up and the cracks are good, but it is...
But we can use, if I can find oil to put in or whatever, I mean, we could use it to chip seal our patches and stuff.
Yeah, we don't need to run six hundred gallons through it.
No, no, I can see if I can figure out the way you can hold a whole carton to the new one.
Yeah. I think it'd be a great investment. Our other one is...
And they're, they're giving us first right of refusal before they put it on the open market for somebody else to look at. Correct.
They're hoping not to come back and pick it up, I'm sure.
I'm assuming he'll be calling me tomorrow, and he will have a meeting tonight. And I could visit with him too, I mean, he knows that it's sitting empty and we probably won't use it till spring. And I don't think he would click off the thirty days over the winter.
That'd be great.
That would be better.
Until it's cracked seal time, I can visit with him.
I'd like us, I'd like him to see it being used when, when it's suitable. You know, it's like, you, you don't wanna plant a new tree in the, in the middle of the summer when it's a hundred degrees in Arizona or something like that.
They would hold that warranty, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, that, that would be ideal.
Jerry, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, move forward with this tar kettle for twenty-eight five. And have Dave get back to us or get back to Monty on if he can hold that warranty in the start of the season.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Wolfe, discussion. Monty, we're, uh, we take this out of equipment, or where do we take this from?
I talked to Monty, we had the seventy-four budgeted for equipment, it's at twenty-seven. Question. If the warranty doesn't get extended, are you still focusing?
Yeah, because I mean, a brand new one is sixty plus thousand.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, I've...
There's really nothing, nothing worth it.
For the shapes that say it's brand new, it's for two thousand dollars, it's literally brand new.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Rule call.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolfe.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried, thank you. Uh, nothing to do business, approval of bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolfe.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Rule call.
Wolfe.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Hack.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried.
On Wednesday.
Might need to be...
Me, it would have to be Friday.
Me too.
Does anyone want to go to Friday night?
No.
What time?
How about next Monday evening? No, we have the, we, we also have the appreciation of the street workers next Monday night. By the way, uh, HCD and CBB are spending some money to... So thank you for street guys just having part of your, guys, they helped put a part of it, and putting up all the banners. Directing golf courses. Fifteen leagues is... Wings.
Monday night, uh, next week.
Yeah, next Monday.
Is that an informal invite?
Yes, sure, absolutely.
What time? And there may be a form of pressure, so... There may also be food, consider it covered.
Yeah.
I think it's at six. You could've been a preacher. Can we tie the two things together?
Man's there, yeah. I don't think so, not that, probably not that, probably not that's allowed there.
Well, or if everybody just wants to give me a calendar for the next...
I'm gone for next Tuesday, though. Do as if you're Friday.
So, no, it's Friday.
Saturday or Sunday, we plan to meet on the fifth.
Friday, it's, how early can you be here, distance between this Friday? Four? So you'd be here four days on Friday?
Absolutely, I'm off on Friday, so. We're working a four-ten schedule, so I'm, I'm available all day on Friday. So back today, four thing, Monday, what time?
I don't know, we'll just...
So Friday about four for the...
Budget?
Budget?
The twenty-sixth.
Yes, this Friday.
Yeah. Well, if that doesn't work... We'll miss one sub all the time. And he is, he does have the finance, one of his portfolios. Other than Sunday night, on the fourth, you're saying, or August fourth?
It's my anniversary.
With a bank picnic. I will be not able to...
So that's just fine for Friday.
Friday, thanks.
Thank you.
See you, Jerry.
Meeting adjourned.